Speak up.
I call the November seventeenth city council meeting order that's seven oh one. You please rise, yeah, rise pleasantly.
I'm the United States of America. The United States of America. One nation under God, in the Father, and in the Son. The Lord is our God.
Thank you. Laurie, would you please step on the roll?
Thank you, Councilor Page.
Here.
Councilor Hagedorn.
Here.
Councilor Payton.
President.
Councilor Reading.
Here.
And Council President Dumbrow.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. And now I will entertain voting for the approval of the November seventeenth consent agenda and November third compliments.
The minutes of the agenda.
Motion.
Well, second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Reading, second by Councilor Page, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda and the minutes say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now we're gonna move on to public comments, so I have two. I have Larry Gonzalez, if you can come up and state your name from the record and inside or outside the city.
Inside what?
Your name and inside or outside the city, please.
Larry Gonzalez, North Plains resident. Oh, Councilor, thanks for your attention and for allowing me to speak. I've got a few points here of lack of movement on critical needs, so look at the.
Larry, I don't know if the microphone's quiet.
How's that better? Oh. Bye now.
Yes, thank you.
It's my turn. It's my turn. For this, so. Yeah, so we look, we submitted some planning commission and about movement on the U G B. And we're still waiting for the FISA on that. I know that there's some in neighborhood meetings are a good start, but don't turn your back on the two years of work that's already been done on the U G B. As well as you're starting the neighborhood meetings in November, it would have been nice to have it start in January of twenty twelve five. And this movement on the U G B should be at the direction of council not outside entities with little invisibility of the North Plains residents. I've seen a lot of misinformation out there, and I think the city council needs to take a look at what's been disseminated and try to corral that. And also to prevent a repeat of the last U G B problems, it needs to be more communication with the residents because not everybody reads a monthly newsletter. I just got a wind of the meeting that happened last week today when I opened my mail. And the other thing about the U G B is not just growth, but boundary, right, or from the boundary. Those for another others may decide to take some of the opportunity away from us. Also, supporting local business, I think you should support the local business. Don't sink them, stand up to council members and others who want to boycott or impact businesses that they perceive are supporting their political opponents. If you don't stand up for small business, you're part of the problem. Existing and potential businesses are aware of this issue, North Plains, people boycotting businesses. And so try to stand up for small business and push this stuff away. We need to attract business, not repel it. Also, don't turn away state and local, state county help. The Glencoe intersection project is could be a benefit to the city, so please think of the future. And finally, funding, North Plains faces a revenue shortfall for the foreseeable future. There's, I know that you've been thinking about this, but we need a plan for increased revenue as soon as possible. The water fund is not a bottomless resource and increasing water bills has limits. Also, additional levies to support services add taxes to the existing residents. And if there is a budget shortfall, we're gonna have cutbacks and you being honest with the residents of North Plains about what those contacts are. Cutbacks are and how it's gonna impact them. And finally, lots of votes from mayor and city council, everybody's watching, so please don't give people a chance to oppose your decision. And please don't vote for yourself if you're in a position where you can do so, addressing the mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we've got Bush Kendall on mayor choices.
The city councilors. Want to speak to you about choices and decision making. This is your moment. A moment when you realize that despite what your life has been up to now, regardless of anything you have done in the past, what matters most is what you do next in selecting a mayor this evening. The choice of an experienced mayor is crucial to the future existence of North Plains, a viable city. What we've seen in the past several months, this cannot go on, but please take that into consideration. Bush Kendall, fifty year resident of North Plains, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, and Laurie, that is it.
That is it, didn't receive anything else prior to the meeting.
So that concludes our public comment period, thank you for the comments. Next, we'll move on to staff reports, and number one, we have library, Robyn.
Can you can counsel? My staff report is a bit W C C L S heavy this month, and I wanted to make sure you were in the loop on all those things. I want to take just a moment to congratulate Brianna Sawinski, our librarian for her promotion to librarian two. She did additional formal leadership training and excellent work and and built her skills, and she's earned a promotion to librarian two. I don't have any questions about my report.
Counsel. I believe we have library funding on a future work session, but yes, that is great news and congrats Brianna, very proud. Our staff just promoted.
And she is, she's on vacation, but maybe she can visit in the future.
When she comes back, yes, we love it. It definitely does make, or at least me, like, thanks to be called, also make us a little bit prouder every moment, every time we see somebody from our staff succeed like that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I believe is Jeff Kujak.
Hello again, everyone, standing for Chief Jones, he's not on train this week. I assume everyone has the report. In that case, I don't have anything to add, but I am available for questions.
Oh, sorry. I, I mean, I don't have a question, but I did notice the update and I probably sit down with Chief and just get more details, but then, yeah, that was. That was something I was discussing with the Chair of County Commission, so I just wanted to. That's something we'll need to follow up on, I see, I just want to understand a little bit more, so that way, I think there's a work session coming in where she got public safety, so I want to make sure.
Absolutely.
So, but no, otherwise, great, thank you.
Thank you guys.
That's in for public work.
Good evening. Counsel. My voice is getting me that loud. I don't have much to add to my report, except for I wanted to congratulate Matt Schnapp for passing his water distribution one, and he's well on his way to a water distribution two. He's got all the skills and the talents to be able to do it, he just has a time requirement that he has to fulfill for that state certification. I also want to bring a reminder to everyone, not just council, that there is going to be a county public meeting tomorrow night about the West Union Glencoe intersection, and so any information that folks want to know will be available tomorrow night in a little bit more detail. Also, in some unfortunate news, we were going to have an operation supervisor start today, but I got an email yesterday saying that he is not going to be working for the city of North Plains, and so I'm going to be working on a alternative and kind of strategic session with what's going to happen in the future. Other than that, I am open to questions.
Dustin, last week I remember giving high fives about us making train before Thanksgiving. Was there any reasons that was listed or just that another opportunity came over this month?
The main reason was personal reasons.
All right.
Well, we're sorry to hear that, because I was stoked. And yes, I would all, I would echo, if you have questions about the West Union Glencoe intersection, please show up. I'm sure at least some of them will be answered.
We know the size where it's gonna be.
Oh, sorry.
Right here, five percent.
Yeah.
Same bad times, bad times.
Yeah. And since that impacts me directly, I will definitely care. All right, thank you. All right, moving on, Robin, planning.
Good evening, councilors, I don't have much to add to my report. I would like to note that we did have our first neighborhood meeting for the Sunset Bridge neighborhood last Thursday, and we were very happy with how that went. Turnout was higher than staff was expecting, we had some great conversations with people. So we're hopeful that those, we have three more meetings, one focused in Bridhale, one for sort of central or Old Town North Plains, and one focused on the business community here. So we'll hope that people show up for those, and we have all of that information readily available on our website. We also had a conversation with Planning Commission at their regular meeting, and they will be interested in convening a work session with you all to discuss the planning budget and how they can better direct budget to accomplish city goals over the remaining biennium. Other than that, I am open for questions.
Counsel. Okay, I'll just, I'll echo the, the meeting, I was in attendance, I just like to alert and kind of observe, so lots of good questions, and maybe more space, I guess. But it was good to have a deep name for theirs, so we can kind of get a better cross section of what each, each area would like, so we can get a better picture, so thank you. Next up is, oh, Brian, three J, Brian.
Good evening. Good evening, councilors, I have nothing to add to my report, so if there's any other questions, I'm here to answer them.
Counsel. All right, I just have one. I noticed the uptick in solar, is that just a normal trend or is there anything interesting there? I was just curious about it, just because I'm curious about this. The solar permits.
Oh, that would be through planning, through Rowan there, yep.
Is they? I was just, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I was just curious, is this seasonal or is this just?
Yeah, so primarily seasonal, we've seen a real downturn over the last few weeks. We had a big year August and September, October started tailing off.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. Which, that's good, good thing you see those, by the way. Okay, next is, uh. Bryant.
Bill. I'm there. Bryant, okay, there we go. It's a working. Nothing to add to the monthly staff report that you have in front of you and had, hopefully had time to take a look at. I think the, the main thing I would just add is this will be the last month ending October thirty first, where we won't begin to start to see property tax revenue, the new fiscal year coming in, that will start in November, that'll be, you'll begin to see that in the report next month, so this is the last month where there's nothing to report yet, so that's, and we tend to do it a running total, just to kind of see where things are year over year by month, and then, and then in total cumulatively, but other than that, a thing to add to the report, so thank you.
Counsel, any questions? All right, I'm sorry.
So it just amazed me, it's been around a few times already now for initial income, I also think a space being available is a good thing for the community, it's a nice spot. You have a chance to rent and use, so not just, just maybe it's not only a piece of income, but also has a chance to, you know, benefit people for having a space to, to use, so why don't you just make it out there, let's, you have it, just gonna use it, and so, anyway, this is a good place to be.
Yes. Girl, you're here tonight. All right, moving on to unfinished business, service and funding plan continued discussion, Bill, I think this is you.
Yeah. Thank you. So really, the kind of a set in the, in the outline of the agenda tonight, just wanted to open public meeting for everybody here, just to confirm that the like, the library levy was was approved by Washington County voters, and that begins a process whereby the county is going to enter an intergovernmental agreements with all the city, or all the cities that have libraries, as well as the libraries that aren't affiliated, give cities the nonprofit libraries in the county. And we're going to see a sizable increase of library revenue from the county, starting in FY twenty seven, so next fiscal year. So as we move into kind of more detailed public services and revenue planning, resource planning, that will be a big factor in how we don't, in how we kind of dig into all that and, and move forward on anything, because all of the additional revenue that gets dedicated to the library, the city doesn't quite have to support the library the same way with its own general fund property tax revenue, so it changes the equation for how we use our general fund revenues. So we'll get into that, but that was just, it was really just kind of an update about that, that it contributes to the conversation when we really get into it.
And I think we're, we had a work session for that in the future to discuss down the road.
Yes.
So we can make sure that we are prepared to, to adjust with the budget for any one time in the summer, so.
Absolutely.
Shining from, and thank you for getting that, that's great, really appreciate that. Okay, next is residency label proposal and Senator Counselor Wedding.
I don't know if I have much to add beyond the report I sent out, did everybody have a chance to read it?
Do you want to recap issues?
So my issue came about when reading the minutes, and people that lived within our zip code were being labeled as non-residents. And then I've been trying to gather information from neighboring cities, I kind of reached out to the City Recorder Association, L O C, trying to get some direction, and it's kind of no man's territory. I went, whoa, sorry, and I kind of, I tried, I really tried to go to other cities and look for minutes. So it's a little difficult, so there's a chart there for the regional comparison. Some list only names, or most lists just names, they don't list resident, non-resident, or addresses, there is, Astori does list names and addresses, which it raises privacy concerns that have already come up. Others just, yeah, was resident or non-resident, so.
Okay, so any, anybody else want to have a discussion on this, comments?
So to flesh it out a little bit for the studio audience, what, what was requested about a year and a half ago, thereabouts, was led up to the collection committees got together, and they'd organize a public comment, we had nobody in the room, right, and also was lucky with their saying, I feel we should do this, and they're talking to us, and we make rules. But it became apparent that, hold on, who are these people? We control North Plains, Washington County has their own representatives, you know, there for that, but what's it for North Plains issues? We have people from strong towns, thousand friends, question of the, in your, in here and speaking to us, is kind of a not knowing any, any better, I thought there's North Plains residism, a lot of people in the audience and are reporting stuff. So we asked, let's, do you actually clarify where they're from, so we understand where they're, where they're coming from, yes, maybe like a lawyer or something, was here giving public comments, as if she was somebody that lived inside the city with our tax revenue, but you know, everybody's have a chance to maybe have a free speech, and that's excellently about that. We also want to know who are the students, people that we're trying to reach out to and help. So that's what we asked them to say, do you live inside the city or outside the city, so we understand. There's some people that live outside the city, felt that they don't like being called outside, say outside, and nobody likes that, that's not nice. So we're trying to be more inclusive in how we're gonna do it, so that's how this actually went up here, we're here now. So that's a little background.
Counsel, anyone, Council Payton, any comments, thoughts?
You hear me, I might have the, the done, that's okay, I'll shout. First, I want to make, or Council Reading.
Oh, I'd like to thank Council Reading for acting up this proposal, proposal and recommendation. Clearly, you did your due diligence and surveyed protocol with all of our surrounding cities, and I want to thank you for that, I haven't seen anybody do that today. It's even much more smoother, you have my full support and your recommendation, it accomplishes the best of both worlds, which I think we're trying to be.
There's three options, not two, there's a bunch ones.
Two, recommendation, that's she, black recommendation.
So for recommendations, there's option one, which the numbers were approached, which aligns with the peers. Basically, use the name only, say hi, my name's so and so, and here's what I want to say. Keep it just clean, the whole, I teach it just clean, simple, consistent, so everybody gets to have the same pedal, right? Option two, which is recommendation, and I kind of, it'd be nice one as well. Identifying public commenters as either city residents, means you're the Brooklyn City. Rural, nine seven one three three resident, I need you to zip code. This, this is the closest city you have, so you identify as North Plains, right? And you know, you have, you're affected by the roads and some of the good services, libraries, just parks dividing, you use this, right? So rural, nine seven one three three resident, and they say not resident, means you don't, but then you do live with the zip code, usually it's somewhere else, right? And that's the three classifications. Option number three is just, we just say, give your address. The cons about that, if you want to know where, you know, they want to have public state, but they don't want to be rural people live, so that's the three options we have. And others three, I think option number two is probably the best one here, so.
That's great.
Thank you, I also want to echo, thank you, Council Reading, just for compiling this and bringing it forward, I am aligned with option two, and I think, not to add more work, but if we had consensus as a council, if perhaps staff could add a placard or a card to the actual table when providing public comment, something to think about. If I were to decide, which one do I fall under, this might be confusing, so just giving those three options to keep over the table, then public comment, like we have four, if we have consensus.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I believe that is consensus, I agree, option two makes sense, because we do have people outside the city who are in the zip code, as it were, and they use our services, but they don't necessarily pay taxes to, through the city. So I think that makes it clean and easier to use option two, so Bill, Laurie, I believe if I recall, conversation, I think you just need direction, not, or do you need a motion for this?
No.
Just direction, okay, so I think that's a census, so let's go with the city resident role, might say one through three, and not as an option. I think that will just keep everything clean, and then we understand who and where, who they're representing, I think will make more sense.
And to think of it from the council payments.
Oh, yeah.
To make it easier, when we do the cards, we fill it out, tell them it was a check box, not a resident, you know, just spell it out for everybody, so they know what to check, so it's easier for you to.
Well, depending on what, what the topic is, sometimes we have to mail them something, so.
No, no, we, we can just, they're, yeah, they just check, you know, what.
Well, I can tell by their address, I, I know, you know, by their address, so, but yes, we can.
Whatever works. All right, thank you, and yes, again, thank you, Council, we got it together, I appreciate it, I know they took a bit of research, so that is very helpful. And then, item C, city information and engagement, so this, what, I went back and watched, I wanted to make sure that we had to close the loop on this, because I went back and watched the, two council meetings go on October. We had had this conversation about public comment and how people interact with the city, so I just want to clarify the, and counsel correct me if I'm wrong, but what I saw in the recording is the consensus was everyone, that means everyone, whether they're resident or not, if they want information from the city, should be using the public records request process. Are we still on board with that, Paul?
Aye.
Yes. So, so I, I just wanted to be very, very clear about this, there is, that's the direction to staff, is if somebody's coming and wanting information, we have a process, we'll follow the process, if the process becomes onerous, please bring that to us, and we can try to work through that. But just to the public in general, that is the process, so please follow the process. Just keep it simple, keep it clean, and if you disagree with it, you'll come and make public comment, but that's the rules. And we'll call them, and they'll be much happier for, or not. All right, and now we move on to the main event, so I am going to, Ashley, I believe we need to select, we somebody to take a meeting over to the pairs, since I'm gonna have to bench.
Good evening, city council, it's Ashley Driscoll, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes, that is one of my recommendations, how I sort of envisioned this agenda item going. I was gonna go over the information I provided you in the email earlier today, and then move on to some decision points for the council. So Council President Dumbrow, do you mind if I go ahead and do that?
Oh, please, yes, yes.
Okay. So I sent the council, or rather linked the email this morning about the process. I'm gonna walk you through sort of the process generally, specific procedures that we're gonna apply tonight. How votes are counted is sort of a reminder for those who may be new to this process, and then kind of summarize with the decision points that the council is gonna need to make prior to starting the selection process. So I'm just gonna go ahead and jump right in, and again, I know the council's been through this relatively recently, but some of this is for the benefit of the folks who might be joining us for the first time. So the process for selecting a mayor is dictated both by the city charter and by provisions of the municipal code. Section thirty three of the charter requires that a mayor, mayor will vacancy be filled by appointment by a majority of the remaining council members. Because we have five councilmen, members remaining, an appointment will require the affirmative vote, vote of at least three counselors. So along with section thirty three of the charter, we also have some provisions of the municipal code that guide the process. And this is in municipal code thirty three point three seven. And the first process point in that provision is that, and this is one A, is that the council may make inquiries and hold interviews it considers necessary for the appointment. So pursuant to the city code, interviewing of all the applicants or even any of the applicants is not strictly required. The council makes decisions about the interviews that it wants to hold as it feels is necessary. The appointment, our appointments can be made at either regular or special city council meetings, so if you make the appointment this evening, this is a regular city council meeting. Some additional process points from the municipal code before you can appoint somebody to feel, to fill the vacancy, you have to advertise the vacancy in the newspaper, I believe that was already done, you have to leave that application period open for two weeks, that was already done. It is my understanding that the city has received six applications. So after you go through the interview process tonight, you're gonna move on to selection, and I'm gonna talk about that in more detail later. But generally speaking, people can be nominated, or the appointment is made from nominations from those applicants that then have to be seconded for consideration. Once you have all of your nominations established, the city council will vote to fill the vacancy via a ballot. The ballots will all be collected and read, and as I said before, if any one candidate receives three votes, that person shall be appointed mayor. And as I said before, if any one candidate receives three votes, that person um shall be appointed mayor. A new um nuance that we're introducing or going over more thoroughly tonight is how the city council addresses um a member of the council who's present but choosing not to vote, or an abstention or refusal. And that is governed by section thirty point oh seven of the North Plains Municipal Code. That section says every member present, when a question is called upon, shall either vote aye or no. So that is a requirement. If a city council member is present at a meeting, that you are required to vote. Unless the council by unanimous consent excuses a member for a special reason, or unless a member has a conflict of interest under the applicable law, in which case no consent is required. So in this case, because Council President Dunbrow is um under consideration to be appointed mayor, he may choose to recuse himself. If he would like to do that, he will need to ask for the unanimous consent of the council. And then he may do so if he receives that consent. However, North Plains Municipal Code always keeps us on our feet or on our toes. Um, you know, once he has decided to recuse himself, that's the direction he goes in. Um, if his refusal creates a tie, um, then his vote shall be counted as an aye. So if there's a tie, the count, the mayor's refusal counts as an aye.
Sorry, Ashley, aye for which side on the side?
So we, uh, so I'm gonna get to that in a second. If it's a yes or no question, your, the refusal will count as a yes. Um, however, in all other situations, the mayor vote, the, I'm sorry, the um, the refusal vote will count towards the majority. So if it is a tie, yes or no question, then a refusal counts as a yes. In all other cases, um, the tie or the refusal counts towards the majority.
No, we're still have the same problem. As you say, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, there's, if there's a tie, that I for the yes, still means nothing.
So let me get to the rest of it, because I think what you're pointing out is that in this situation, it's not necessarily a yes or no question when you're voting on a ballot of candidates. So if you read to the bottom of the email, and I'm gonna get there, I agree with you. You know, when we're talking about two candidates that both receive two votes or there's a tie, there is no yes or no for the for the refusal vote to count as a yes. So let me get through the rest of the process points, and I hope that becomes more clear. So that's the general outline of the municipal code that's governing this process, specific procedural notes for this evening. Um, so we've already gone through the process of opening the or advertising the vacancy. We have received um six applications. We are at a regularly scheduled meeting. The application materials have been included in your packet for this evening. Because the council president has applied for the male position prior to beginning the process, it's our recommendation that the city council appoint somebody else to be the presiding officer during this agenda item. And that's because the council president, who is currently the presiding officer, will be participating in this. I will note this as a decision point at the end of the items I'm gonna go over. You can do this via a motion. Because the council president has applied for the mayoral position, he may request to be recused from voting on all items related to the mayoral selection because of a special reason. The council must grant the refusal by unanimous consent. And again, that will be a decision point um when I'm done going over the rest of the process. Once those two points are clarified, the next question for the council is um whether the council believes that that interviews are necessary. As I mentioned at the outset, the municipal code says that the interviews are their option of the council. So first question is, does the council want to conduct interviews? If the council believes interviews are necessary, whether the council desires to interview um repeat applicants. I should have clarified at the beginning, the council, the city received six applicants. Two are repeat applicants from from our last mayoral process. One is the council president, and three are new applicants. So the council could decide um not to interview the repeat applicants who they have already heard from from um previously. The council could also decide that it does not need to interview the council president if they feel like they understand, you know, the how how the council president would approach the role of the mayor. Um, or the council can decide to interview all six. Um, so all of those options are open to the council. So if the council believes interviews are necessary, the next question is which questions does the council, would the council like to ask the applicants? Um, I believe the city has prepared the six questions that the council asked in the last mayoral process. I also put those in the email to you this afternoon. I don't think I'm gonna go go over and read them today. But the council can decide to ask these questions, an abbreviated set set of questions, or completely new questions. And lastly, for um the interview question process, if the council believes interviews are necessary, the council also can implement a time limit for each applicant, which I believe last time um was ten minutes. So if the council president abstains from participating in these preliminary decisions and the vote results in a tie, his vote would count as an aye, so his vote would count towards a yes. In all other situations, his vote would count with the majority. Um, so generally speaking, unless we're discussing it here, the council will follow the Roberts Rules of Order in making this nomination process. So once you get through the interviews, you make the decisions about what questions you want to ask. Um, after that is complete, the presiding officer will ask um will ask for nominations. As I mentioned before, nominations require a second before they become valid. Any member of the council that is voting may nominate one applicant, and once the applicant is received, the presiding officer will ask for a second. If a second is received, the presiding officer will declare the nominee nominated and then ask for further nominations. That's exactly the same as the city council did it last time. If an applicant does not receive a second, the presiding officer will declare that the applicant has not been nominated and will ask for further nominations. The presiding officer will continue to ask for nominations um from the applicants until no further nominations are received, provided that no member of council may nominate or second an applicant or more than one applicant. So every member of council, you can either nominate or second one applicant. Once nominations are closed, the voting takes place with each voting member of the council, council voting for one of the nominee. So voting is done by ballots. I believe Lori will pass a ballot out to each member of the council. They will record who they are proposing to be the next mayor, return those to Lori. Lori will read the results out loud. Um, all non-excused members of the council, um, including the presiding officer, are entitled to vote. If any nominee receives three votes, they are appointed mayor. If no nominee receives three votes, then the council must revote until one nominee receives three votes. The council should not seek to eliminate nominees based on the votes cast without restarting the nomination process. And here's the nuance with um the council president recusing himself if he decides to do so. If two nominees both receive two votes, the council's president's abstention should have no effect, so it would remain a tie. Um, and that's because the municipal code says any member who declines to vote and the result of such action should create a tie, that member's vote shall be counted as an aye. In all other situations, the mayor's vote shall be counted with the majority. That provision is triggered when there's a yea nay vote or if there's a majority vote. Because in that situation, there would be no yea nay vote, nor would there be a majority. That provision of the municipal code would not be triggered. So if the council reaches a stalemate, the council may by motion um vote to decide to reopen nominations to see if another applicant can garner the necessary three votes. The council may deliberate in deliberations before any vote. So just to summarize how votes are gonna be counted here is that all members or counselors expected to vote for a nominee unless they're excused by the remainder of the council. Votes must be counted based on the nominee each counselor casts a ballot for, provided that any abstentions or recusals must be counted for the nominee who receives the major majority vote. If two nominees are tied, then there is no majority, so the abstention would not count towards any nominee. We talked about typically the mayor would vote to break a tie and not vote to be and not be able to vote for a nominee. But because the council previously decided that the presiding officer, last time around, that was the council president, retains the right to vote, the presiding officer should not vote to break a tie, and thus the votes will remain tied. So I'm gonna do decision points and then see if anybody on council has any questions. So the first preliminary items that we need to go over tonight is to select a presiding officer. Again, that can be by motion. And then second, if the council president is requesting to recuse himself, that would be an item to be considered preliminarily as well. The next decision point for the council is how to approach the interviews, who do you want to interview, and um what questions you would like to ask. Um, and then lastly, just to confirm, based on past practice and prior council decisions, I would like the council to confirm that the presiding officer shall retain the right to vote and not have the right to break a tie. So thank you for bearing with me. I'm beginning to lose my voice. Um, can I address any questions um from the council regarding the process?
To accept the uh, if the council president refuses itself, which is, which he will probably do, do you need a motion, do you need one of that as a motion?
Yeah.
Or?
Yeah, he can ask for unanimous consent, and we can do that um via a motion or just the council can give consent. Okay, let's start the process then. Um, so the first is, sounds like the council president um is okay with us selecting a presiding officer. So if somebody from the council would like to nominate somebody to be presiding officer or make a motion to appoint somebody to be the presiding officer for this agenda item, that would be a great place to start.
I'll put your motion for somebody to take a word for that.
On the counselor page, should you go there as the main officer for this meeting?
I have a nomination for Counselor Page, very excited.
I'll second.
All right, Counselor Page and uh, nominees, Counselor Page, Counselor Reading, seconds. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those posed, motion carries.
All right, if the presiding officer would like to ask for any recusals, now would be an appropriate time for that.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the city council that can recuse themselves from this process?
I'll recuse myself.
Um, the council press.
You guys are, I'll have to get it.
He would need to receive unanimous consent from the remaining members of the council.
There, uh, President Dunbar wants to refuse himself because he is running for the mayor position. Does anybody have a challenge for that? Very none. We have none. Is everybody in agreement? The answers, can I start with his voice, starting with to the left?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We have a unanimous uh, assesses, so. President Dunbar, would you mind uh, please? Thank you. Oh, all right, are we ready to start it? Yeah. So we have six people uh applying for the job of mayor, three of which we know very well, uh, the two have had interviewed before, once the council presidents. But we have three people that are new. Where is the way the council, they're gonna have a interview process, and if so, we have six questions. How do you want to apply those questions? If you do want, if you're everybody. This is, this is, and everybody want to uh, we don't want to choose to align.
I'm happy to just interview those that we have not heard from. So I agree, I would be willing to listen to our new, our new um candidates. Okay. I would like to leave those stone unturned, and I would like to propose interviewing all six candidates with a time limit of ten minutes each.
So we have two ideas. One is just to uh interview folks that have not applied yet. And have just interviewed, they want to interview everybody. I'm in agreement that today's a new day, and people may have new things to say from the last time. So I also think that we should probably let everybody have their chance to speak with a ten minute um limit as a soft limit, so it doesn't run out. Is, no? The chat's not here, then they they either actually Zoom or we is that right? So we have two ideas. Can we get a uh decision of how we want to go about this? We have a discussion.
Were all the, were all the candidates notified that they could be interviewed tonight? Like, I know last time you were pretty clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They were also sending an email at the same time saying invitation to attend here with the possible opportunity to answer questions. It wasn't a, because we didn't know what.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
I'm sure they have.
So.
So we have two ideas. Uh, we have a discussion. Does anyone know uh?
Uh, I I'm aligned to go through and interview questions if we can, if we can adhere to the ten minute allowance.
Okay.
And if we have a person that's volunteering at the time.
That's right. Do you, are you okay there?
Yeah, ten minute hard.
Okay, so we're gonna have a ten minute guideline. We're gonna interview each candidate. We have six questions. Um, does each council want to ask one question during this ten minutes? You guys get to ask any question that are on the papers, or you guys get to throw your own out. Is that okay?
That means I have that.
Last time, last one, this last time. You guys want to listen to the questions that are on the sheet? With the option to ask more, or just wanted to get on the, with the person on the sheet, with the opportunity to follow up?
Well, let's stick to the questions on the sheet, since we have a limited time limit of ten minutes later.
As a paper.
I'm aligned with that.
Okay. I'm sorry, so as there. Ashley, you can answer.
I do. I just want to make sure that we didn't skip over one procedural issue before we headed into the interviews, which is just confirming that based on past practice and prior council decision, even though the presiding officer is fulfilling a role that the mayor may fill, that the presiding officer is retaining the right to vote for nominees and does not also have a right to break ties. That's how we did it last time.
We took that earlier.
I'm sorry?
We are, we are all aligned on that, right? Everybody?
Aligned. Yes, so should should Council President Dunbar come back up to the dice if he is eligible for nominations?
He would use himself, I believe.
No, he's recused. What I mean is the presiding officer, which right now is Counselor Page.
I I don't get two votes, this is what you're saying.
You don't get two votes, yep.
You're bad.
I think.
Okay, thank you.
We're like, we're not gonna have me having two votes. All right. Before we start this process, it's gonna be a little lengthy. You have a chance to freshen up, talk to neighbors. I'm going to call a 10 minute recess. Actually, we're going to start, let's start at 5 minute recess. All right, I'll call. Let's do a 10 minute recess, we will, we'll start the process at 8 p.m. Thanks for breaking. North Plains, November 17th, City Council, we're about to conduct the mayororal interviews. Yeah. For the interview process, we're going to go in order by last name. Blanca, Matt, are you in the room? Okay, number one. Hey, Matt. Matt, so you know the rules of the game. What we have is five, we have the six questions here. You have 10 minutes. Use them as you wish. If you could start off by introducing yourself and tell us those that passion and then we'll start into the interview questions.
So actually, I was hoping to do a statement instead of the question, just because the email didn't indicate interview slash questions tonight. So if that would be okay with you all, as an alternative to that process. And then I would like to give the rest of that time over to my fellow candidates.
Very good.
Point of order, one. I'm, I'm, we have 10 minutes, a hard 10 minutes for each person speaking. I'm going to keep time, but at one minute, I will let you know there's one minute left on that time, 10 minutes. So excuse that interruption if and when it happens.
No problem, please, Bill. Appreciate it. And thank you Katie for asking that question earlier. I just wanted to like throw some identification and then you know the other questions for the interview.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Matthew Blanca. I am seeking to serve as mayor of North Plains because I believe in leading with integrity, collaboration, and a strong commitment to community. I've lived in Oregon for nearly 10 years and I've been a resident of Plains for about a year and a half now, so I'm a newcomer. In that time, I've come to appreciate the city's character, its values, and the importance of steady thoughtful leadership. I bring over 20 years of experience in public administration and public service shaped across multiple levels of government. My background includes work with the city of Hillsborough, the city of Portland, Portland State University, and Portland Community College, where I supported policy development, strategic planning, accessibility, and equity initiatives. Early in my career, I served in the U.S. Army where I developed strong skills, leadership, administration, organizational readiness, skills that still guide my approach today. My educational foundation reflects my commitment to strengthening local government. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration and Executive Master of Public Administration from Portland State University. And I am currently pursuing a PhD in Leadership and Education. My studies focus on governance, systems thinking, and community connection, areas directly relevant to the issues facing North Plains today. As a newcomer to North Plains, I also offer something uniquely valuable in this moment, neutrality, a fresh perspective, and independence from longstanding local divisions. I'm coming into this role without attachment to existing conflicts or power political dynamics, combined with my strong administrative background. This allows me to approach city challenges objectively, restore stability, and help rebuild public trust. I believe this makes me an ideal candidate for an appointed position, someone who can step in with professionalism, fairness, and a focus on what is, what, on what best serves the community as a whole. Right now, our city is at an important crossroads, leadership turnover, ongoing discussions about the urban growth boundary expansion, and concerns about communication and transparency have created understandable uncertainty. These challenges require consistent leadership, clear communication, and a renewed commitment to accountability. Throughout my career, my approach has remained the same, listen carefully, bring people together, and translate community priorities into meaningful action. I have strengthened administrative systems, supported inclusive initiatives, and helped organizations navigate complex issues with clarity and transparency. Most importantly, I care about the future of North Plains. I'm committed to leading with honesty, transparency, and a focus on what truly serves residents. It'd be an honor to bring my experience, education, and administrative expertise to the role of mayor. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Matt.
I think if the rest of my time, if I follow.
Thank you so much. That is the CD, the question asked for period, for the next candidates. Very good student, thank you so much. Aaron Dunbar.
Wow. Sorry, I said that is loud.
Yes, it is. So Aaron, as you heard earlier, we have the 10 minutes. Bill's going to be the gatekeeper. On that, at 1 minute mark, he is going to sit before. So to everybody know that the times wrap up. We just had to make an opening statement and then we'll go on to the questions.
Aaron Dunbar, as president. I guess I can just ask the first question. So you know who I am and I want to be mayor to try to bring everybody back together, to find the common ground in the city and to to invite the council and the staff and the residents of North Plains and find a new path forward.
That's already, you tried to ask the question.
Can you make all the meeting?
I can. And in addition, I've been, since I made the decision to put in for mayor, I've been spending a lot of time with county commissioners, different parts of the county staff, different boards and commissions that I'm not necessarily on, but just trying to get to know people and also working with some of our state local electeds, just trying to build good bridges, because I think that's something that got dropped for a little bit, not testing any explorations, just saying it did get dropped and just trying to pick that up and it's been working pretty well for the last several weeks.
I will go next. What is your understanding of the mayor's role as a council manager for the government? And how would you effectively work the destruction?
So mayor is one of seven councillors and, you know, is the figurehead, but really just one of seven. And the city manager administers the city, manages the city. So the council's role is to provide the policy direction to the city manager as a collaborative effort. And then the city manager executes on, on said policies. So my way of handling that is to work with council to get consensus and then make sure that we as a group communicate that to city manager and then support city manager when when he does that and stand in front of him when he's taking, you know, arrows or slings, whatever, stones, and stand behind him when we need to get out of his way and let him do his job or stay out of his way in general.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Can you describe your approach to consensus building, particularly in situations with conflicting stakeholder views or people do not agree?
You mean city council? So my, my approach is, as it always is, I try to have a little bit of humor, tell bad jokes. But usually my, my approach is just to listen to everyone, try to hear every side of the situation. If something's not on fire, I'm going to make a decision until we need to. And my goal is to find a way for all of us to get, you know, to, to win. Obviously, somebody's not going to get everything they want. Everybody can get something. Usually that's better situation. So I'm just looking for ways, you know, in general, to, to win consensus or build consensus in this case.
How do you define community engagement and how will you promote public involvement and decision-making?
So community engagement, it's just like the meeting we had at Offalody, I said it right, Offalody Elementary the other night. It's listening. There were a lot of varying opinions and now I have a whole bunch of new notes that I want to talk to council about when the times right. I also have questions for Ron and Bill because it brought up some interesting opportunities. So I think that's a lot of this community, is that type of community outreach. It's listening to public comment even when we don't like what we hear. There's a lot of opinions both inside and outside the city. So sometimes we just have to listen and and think about it. Sometimes I just take a lot of notes and go think about it and come back to the next meeting and ask council for, for input or, or I give my inputs, say, I heard this, but I didn't really have a good answer. And sometimes it's just going for a walk and stopping, talking to people and asking them. But at the end of the day, we're responsible, council is responsible for making the decision and we have to own the decisions that we make for good or for better, for good or for bad. So we take the public input, but we own the decision at the end of the day and we stand up for it. And if we make a mistake, we own it.
Thank you, councillor President Dunbar. Have you had any closing statements?
You know, it'd be an honor.
Well, I thought we asked with each.
No, there's one more question. We thought we were just way down the line, that you didn't ask a question.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
I thought we were going to ask what is your question each, but it was a question, so we're going to go back. You get them all.
The council recently set a vision for the city over the next two years. As mayor, how would you support that?
Well, I'll break that. So as mayor, one of the things I've asked Bill to, to get, to get us started on is goal setting. It was actually his idea, but I asked him to like, yes, let's make that happen. So we're going to get a consult with him, I believe. We're going to break those down into, into manageable goals, smart goals, and we're going to start executing on those. And we want to get very clear and very clear and objective objectives to staff so that they can go in and execute the city's vision. And we may have to adjust some of those pillars as we go, because they may find they don't fit, but I'm going to do my best to keep us to those and bring everybody, you know, as close to those as we can get safely without, you know, with some guardrails.
Thank you. Now, you have including that statements. This new time.
You know, when I first started this, when the whole thing happened, I didn't really have as strong an desire to be mayor. So I anticipated becoming a mayor of a small town. But as usual in my life, when I decide I'm going to do something, I'm all in. I put in a lot of extra time. I think that, you know, I have, I have definitely done my best to be a neutral party in the city and on the council and hope that I hope, you know, to be given the opportunity to lead and this is something I think that, you know, the city, it would be really good for us to all come together and really work together on what the future of North Plains looks like and how we're going to fund, you know, services and how we're going to be one city and not being divided.
Thank you. David Hatcher. David, thank you for applying again and, and giving you again. I said before, Bill is going to be the timekeeper at 1 minute. He will give the 1 minute warning. Pretty good on the line and ask a question for each councillor. We have five, six questions here. And we're going to start off by having you introduce yourself and tell you why, tell us why you want to be mayor.
Okay, I have a statement to follow up with that. You all know who I am. So I don't know how much background I need to give. I've lived in North Plains 42 years. I've been on planning commission, city council, mayor. I'm on the library board. For the second time, I've done budget committee for over 20 years. I mean, I've got full scope of experience as in city government. And I, I don't know why, is because I love this city and I see some things going on that I think I should be a part of. And, and that's why I want to run. I want to talk about UGB and growth because that is really the elephant in the room. And so that I'm totally open. So if you guys know exactly where I'm at with that, there's no, nothing to. I think two things need to happen. I think, and this is my blinders on as North Plains. Because I understand that there's a whole lot of other stuff going on, but if I were just, just to, just look at my blinders and what I think is best for North Plains is to fill in that area between the east side and North Plains and bring them into the town. I think, I think they need to be part of North Plains, not sitting out there. The other part is Jackson School Road and the freeway there, that interchange for two reasons. One, we need commercial space. You all know that. You're all aware of our tax revenue and how we need to increase that. That's the most natural place to grow, to bring in. The other part with that is Hillsborough. We have a, a area around North Plains. But the governor has shown us how fragile that is when she wanted to bring in areas and up to the freeway, up in North. Hillsborough, Hillsborough's running out of space. They are going to go north. If not 10 years from now, 15 years from now, where is North Plains setting itself up for 20 years from now? Now is the time to, to take that and take care of it. If we, if we do no growth, we are going to lose the opportunity and we're going to be dealing with it in the future. Our children, our grandchildren will have to deal with it in the future. I am personally really concerned about that. So I think, hopefully I'm clear. Oh yeah, one other thing. I have questions about going north. At this time, I think what we need is Gordon Road and interchange there to facilitate any north growth that we have. Because if you grow it there, as I talked about last time on the Glencoe, we get so much of a backup, ODOT's going to, going to put a divide down Glencoe, so you can't turn left or right. Imagine the trucks coming in from Hillsborough, go on Antarctica. They can go in, if they're going to have to go up 307th to get back on the Pacific to get on the freeway, can you imagine it? Those trucks, all that traffic. I was in there this morning, dumped the leaves and it was full. I had to wait. All those trucks going up 307th. So I think until we can get an interchange on Gordon Road, I have questions about going north. I think that's all I have to say. I hope I have enough time for your questions. I've done it all before, so you know where I'm at. Okay.
Do you have, do you have time for all the meetings or any difficulty meeting any of these obligations?
No. I've been there, done it. I know what it takes and I have the time.
What is your understanding of the mayor's role and the council manager for a government? And how would you work effectively?
Yes. Say that again, please.
What does your understanding of the mayor's role and the council manager for a government? And how would you work effectively in the structure?
Okay, as I brought up last time with the the, the drawing where the manager is kind of hanging out here, he, he has no authority, no governmental authority. It's all in the council's hands. Everything is on that. With, with the city manager, he works with the city manager. There'll be meetings with the city manager, get updates, field issues that might come up with the city manager and, and the mayor will bring that back to the council. It wasn't an issue or anything. Some things the mayor and the manager, city manager may work together on. And last time I brought up the recollection and then we had the the divide that I, ODOT wanted to put down Glencoe Road. I mean, there's things we could work together that that aren't governmental decisions and aren't administrative decisions, but have to be dealt with. So there's kind of a gray area there. Hopefully I answered that.
That's good.
Can you please describe your approach to consensus building, particularly in situations with conflicting stakeholder views or people do not agree?
Yeah, I definitely miss this council. It's communication. Hopefully you can get the councillors to explain where they're at. That's really important. I think sometimes I see that not happening the way I would like to see it happen. Because you can't draw consensus until everybody explains where they're at and why they're at. If you can't draw, if you can't reach a consensus, you got to realize it and move on.
How do you define community engagement and how do you call them public to gather their feedback as a part of the?
Well, we're doing right now, UGB, the city is bringing in. I've got four meetings. I was at the one the other night with actually quite a few people that are here now. It was very entertaining. Something that I would like to see happen, we used to do a really vigorous volunteer recognition and we brought in people from way wider group of people in North Plains that we are now. I don't know why it has shrunk so much, but I think it'd be really important to, to do that again. We used to do the library. I mean, the schools and the different nights. I mean, there used to be people, they used to be really active in that volunteer program. And I'd like to bring that in again. Our conscientious hearts are important. I think we need to find a way to get the word out. I heard the D. I go into my time out. To get the word out to people, to get them involved into some of these, some of these organizations and events. Volunteer for like the garlic festival and those kinds of events.
Yeah, we have about three seconds left.
The council recently set a vision for the city over the next two years. As mayor, how would you support that vision?
Oh, boy. Just do it. Find ways to do it. I know one thing I'd like to see happen is look at the different departments closer and what they're needing, what are we missing? But also to go, I'm, I'm trying to remember what that vision was as, as last time.
David, we're at the ten minutes. If you grab your laptop and blow out.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm ten o'clock.
Thanks, sir. Holly, thank you for applying.
Well, thank you for accepting my application.
As stated earlier, everybody's been having ten minutes to, to to actually interview and make a statement and all that stuff. So please be concise. At one minute, we will give you a heads up that you have one minute left. Bill is going to be the key keeper. We're going to go down the line and we'll each of us answer one, one question Katie's going to ask me too. So with that, starting off, I will start with number one. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you want to be mayor.
Well, I want to be mayor to bring unity to this city. This is a gorgeous city for me. I love the people in it and I love the surroundings. You don't find this area with the trees and the prines and everything and the climate. Like I came from Modesto and it's always hot there for me. And so being in the city brought about a change, a good change in my life. And so I want to be, be mayor to bring unity to everybody because I hear things on, when I, I listen to the meetings and I see the distension between people saying outer, inner, outer, inner, who cares? We're people, we're a community and that's what we should do is be a community. And that we can, I can help by bringing that in by having coffee time, maybe go to the old hitching post and say, okay, let's have a coffee time and let's get to know one another and let's find out what your problem, what your concerns are. And that's what I think. And also to work with my, my counselors. You know, we all have to work together to make it a better city. And that's why I want to be mayor.
There are several meetings and daytime meeting obligations with our local boards and commissions. Do you have any difficulty in meeting any of these obligations? And if so, please explain.
Well, there are times where we can't meet everything. We can't go to everything, you know. But we will always send somebody, like if I was mayor, I'd say, okay, would you please go in my, can you go in my behalf? I can't do this right now because I have a doctor's meeting, a doctor's appointment at this time. So I would try to find somebody to go in my place so that we will meet that obligation and that we can get the information that is needed. And then I will do my best to attend what I can.
What is your understanding of the mayor's role of the city council manager for a government? And how would you defend it with the national charter?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. What is your understanding of the mayor's role in the city, I'm sorry, in the council manager for a government? And how is, how would you defend it with the structure?
I, gee, that's a good one. I would try to work with everybody. I don't care who you are. I, I like to talk to people and I want to find out what's going on. So if I have to meet with Bill B., I would go to him and say, hey, Bill, what can I help you with or what's going on? Where, what is happening with this situation? And he can explain it to me and we can go from there. And then I would find ways to get that information so I can bring it to the council.
Can you please describe your approach to consensus building, particularly in situations with conflicting stakeholders' views or where people do not agree?
Trying to find out if somebody doesn't agree, they have that right not to agree. But the thing is, you have to learn to find out why they're not agreeing. Why are they having a problem understanding something? And you have to talk with people in order to find out what's, what we can do for them. And let's say a, a business, okay? Let's say they're having a problem. Go find out what's, what, what's happening. See what we can do to help them alleviate that problem.
What would be your approach to community engagement and book outreach to bring them into the picture?
By talking to them. Because if you don't talk to people to find out what their opinions are or what they need, you're not going to learn to get, have that engagement. Like I said, have a coffee time, bring them in, have them come and sit and ask questions and find out we can find out what they need and what we can do for them. Remember, we are working for them. They are not working for us. So therefore we need to go to them and ask them what, what do you want from us? We need to find out. And if this is what we want, they want, they get a few ideas and nobody has a wrong or right answer. They just have an answer. So they need to know what we're here for them, not them for us.
The council recently set a vision for the city over the next two years. As mayor, how would you support that vision?
Well, it depends upon what the vision is. So if it's going to benefit North Plains, I'm going to support it. But if it's not going to support, it's not going to support North Plains and the people behind me and all our constituents, then why are we doing it? Are we doing it for ourselves? That's not what our council is about. Our council is about the people, not us.
Hey, Pauline, I'm sorry. Pauline, you have a little bit of time, actually, I can try and have the release say.
Oh, no. I'm just happy that you accepted my application and I want to do good for North Plains. That's my goal. To be with the people and to make sure that we're, we have sustainable growth that's going to benefit everybody, not just a few. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you. Russ Shulman.
Any thoughts?
I have a question. Hi, Russ. As everybody knows, we have the ground rules. Bill, if you've been timed, everybody has ten minutes to speak. Each council is going to be asking you one question. I'll just start off with the beginning and then we'll have a here will be the last one. This is your opportunity to review the statements and also the first question is going to be visit yourself, why you want to be mayor, because you're, which has spent.
Well, I may not need a lot of introduction. I served as a city counselor here for, well, prior to my electoral defeat as a mayor for eight years. I've served the community for nearly thirty in a lot of different capacities. Really, my goal here tonight is to represent the forty-five percent of the electorate that actually supported me in the election. I'm speaking basically on their behalf. And I want to help in that this, you know, the divisiveness that's within and has consumed our city. And there are a lot of ways to do that, building bridges with people. Finding out where some of the oppositions common ground is. And that's my purpose. Essentially, I want to continue my journey. Typically, the succession goes through council, through council president, and then you become a mayor. And my, my stint was interrupted by a single unilateral issue, which I think most of you probably know that I stand not necessarily pro-growth, but we have to have growth. It can be balanced. It can be intentional. But are cities facing some significant financial hurdles that will come to fruition in a few years? That will create constraints in the budgets. We'll have to look at other means of revenue and whether people will support that revenue or that we have to cut programs.
In addition to the regular evening council meetings, we have, you have daytime meeting obligations with our local boards and commissions and regional partners, et cetera. Do you have any difficulty in meeting any of these obligations? And if so, please explain.
I don't believe I would, as I stated before, have any difficulties meeting those obligations. I have the time. I have a commitment from my company that values the role of community. So the things that I need to do perhaps during the day to be an ambassador for the city, I can, I can fill that responsibility. I did do some of that as a council president, and I've done that a number of times as the president of the Chamber of Commerce.
What is your standing of the mayor's role and the council manager for government? And how would you work effectively with the national charter?
Well, the mayor is the chief policy maker. So the mayor really helps guide the discussions of policy, creates plans where directions need to move, look and plan what's on the horizon that needs to be essentially discussed, brought before the council, resolutions made, ordinances to address any particular matter and play a leading role in the actual policy body. So a mayor's role isn't to dictate. A mayor's role is to be a consensus builder, to understand where the council's at, to communicate with the entire council, to find out where the common ground's at. But policy direction or leadership, that's the fundamental opportunity and duty of the mayor. The city manager is the chief executive officer of the city. It's, wouldn't be my duty or the duty of the council to interrupt or participate in the operational decisions of the day-to-day that's done by our city manager.
Can you please describe your approach to consensus building, particularly in situations with conflicting stakeholder views or where people do not agree?
Well, I've answered this once before. It's, it's a lot about communication. First and foremost, it's about finding out where differences are rooted among, it could be a particular conflict. There could be dissension. There could be misunderstanding. Maybe part of that's information. So information, communication and fighting common ground on particular issues. I'm not sure that we'll always share common ground, but that doesn't mean we can't find a compromise in that. In my mind, that's something that we did a number of times in the current council or the past council. We had a number of deliberations where we've had to discuss through some of those things that maybe didn't set as well with some members of the council than others and often discussion and communication between that is important. And I would encourage that of all the council because there are times with this council, I'm, I'm not sure you're sometimes talking to one another. Now, you might be, and I don't know that, but that's a pretty important part is how do you bring people together in a decision-making body and especially, especially when there are conflicts. So you've got to root out why that conflict exists and then see what's commonly stitched together to get consensus.
Can you talk to us about your approach to community engagement?
Well, community engagement isn't as easy as it once was. We're a larger community. As my, my friend and former mayor, David Hatcher, said, at one time we papered the town, right? Volunteers went out. A lot of the flyers were put on front doors. There was a lot less doors back then. And that's a little harder to do, but it's not impossible. Part of that's communication, right? You get out in front of people. So you attend meetings of community organizations. You find out what their needs are. You basically can get out and engage people on direct issues through a town hall. You can have meetings with the mayor. Things that help you get in front of folks who otherwise maybe don't have a voice. There's a lot of folks out there that aren't participating. A large part of the electorate did not vote in the general election or in the referendum for that matter.
The council recently set a vision for the city over the next two years. As mayor, how would you support that vision?
Well, the vision should be the guiding star. And I think I put that for the second time in my cover letter. I rearranged it a bit, not just so it looked different, but to maybe say something different, right? The pillars are the goals. Those are the what should be attainable. And the actions that it takes to get there. That's by uniting folks behind those things, making definitive plans to work towards how we can reach those goals. And then getting to the objectives to get it done. That's, that's largely what it takes. Getting to the objectives to get it done. That's, that's largely what it takes. And the pillars aren't that much different from what I've seen before. I think, you know, they're a sound foundation. For this community. And I know there's been some complaints uh, about. You know, the city not working with the, the outside residents, and I, I think there's a way to stitch that in. And include more of them. I don't think they've ever been excluded, but there's, there's definitely two factions that are there in terms of. Where we go with growth. And that's a difficult. In some cases, a difficult decision. But I think there's some, probably some common ground out there. Okay, is that it? Okay, well, the only thing I can say is there's no substitute for experience. And generally, businesses hire talent, they hire experienced folks. Thank you.
We have a sixth candidate that I didn't see in person, so I'm gonna see if she's online. Cindy Hurst, are you online? I don't see her, but if you look at the package tonight, Cindy has her. Uh, application and she answered all six questions in an attachment, so that's a little there for us to do. Alright. Would the council like to uh, have any further questions of the candidates? If not, I'm ready to entertain nominations. Councilor.
I nominate council president Dunbrow. I'd like to second.
You're in first and second for council Dunbrow. Do you have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Russ Shulman.
You're here second. You're none. We have one candidate, Erin Dunbrow. How should we vote? Before the votes come out. Last time. We had a bunch of people applying and they were in the replay again. Uh, it's very courageous. To step up. Because. You run a chance, people say no to you. And that's hard to do. Everybody who has the application is a very good candidate. Very good. Thank you. For applying. It takes a lot of work and it's hard to do this. And I want to say thank you before it. It's really tough. I remember the days when we used to have people volunteering. Nobody would show up. And say, let me do the bushes. Now we have people knocking on doors, it's a lot. It's been contentious. We've had a mayor opening for almost the entire time we've had since, since the election. Our charter has us through this process, but maybe we should clean it up a little bit. Where maybe the presidential, maybe take over as mayor and we can figure something else from there, but I don't know how it's gonna look, we have to discuss it. Uh, this process may even harder than it may be, so we're gonna try to fix this up.
Counselor Page votes for Erin Dunbrow. Counselor Reading votes for Erin Dunbrow. Counselor Payton votes for Erin Dunbrow. Counselor Hagadorn votes for Erin Dunbrow.
Thank you. We have a unanimous election for our next mayor. Mayor Dunbrow, please go forward and give your answer.
The best part about coming back to the bag is when somebody leaves me chocolate, so thank you for doing that. Um, so first, I'd like to just thank the other candidates, as Counselor Page said. It is not fun going through this process, and we do appreciate the, the talent. Um, I'd like to thank the, the council and just. And the public, and just tell you, you know, I will always do my best. Um, and if you disagree with me, you know, how to get ahold of me, I'm happy to sit down with you. I'm gonna listen, we might not agree, but I will do my very best to try to find consensus. Um, doesn't matter who you are, you live in the city or not. I want this to be a place that everybody wants to live. Um, so I'm gonna do my very best for the city, and I'm also gonna do my best for representatives to the county and the state, excuse the state. Um, so with that, agenda.
I will swear you in at the next meeting.
Yeah, oh yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Or unless.
Yes.
Ashley says it needs to be done tonight.
No, it definitely, it definitely does not need to be done tonight. Um, some of the procedural steps that we're gonna need to consider is that the council president's going to need to resign from his um. City councillor seat. And the council will need to declare that vacant. And he will be appointed mayor, but we can take care of all of that at future council meetings.
Does the vacancy need to be posted at another meeting and can we do it now? We can have two. Council members missing, and that's gonna be great, have it done by the year.
I'm sorry, could you, I'm looking at the audience, could you, so I can't see you, could you speak a little bit louder?
Counselor Page, I'll just summarize. He, he's asking, can we just, can I just resign? Now so that we can get the vacancy posted, because we're trying to get this filled before the beginning of the year was, was our thought.
Yeah, you just need to resign before you get sworn in, so you can resign here tonight. Um, or you can resign at the time of swearing in.
Okay, well, can we post the vacancy? I guess we could just post the vacancy, because we don't have to specify how many, Lori, is that correct?
Well, we, I think we.
Yeah, um, I think the best process is that, you know, you can submit your resignation. And then before you get sworn in, you can, um, the council can declare your seat vacant. And then we can get rolling on that next process.
And he resigned at the effective end of this meeting.
I'm sorry, I actually said that wrong, so he should get sworn in and then the council should declare the seat vacant.
Okay, okay, so it sounds like at next meeting I'll resign, get sworn in, resign, and then we'll declare the vacancy and then we'll post. So that puts us at two weeks, so that puts us at. Alright, so this is the first meeting in January to appoint new council. Um, can we open one?
We have one resignation that's been recognized by council, so we could notice the first vacancy.
Counsel, what do you, what's your thoughts? And Ashley, is there any concerns about just doing the one and then we'll do the second one, so?
No, I think that's fine.
And actually, that may, that may be a good idea. Reason why, one council member has. Four, three years left, other one has one year. So this way, we know who's going for one year.
That's a good point. Any thoughts? It keeps it cleaner, in my opinion, but I'm open to other ideas. Okay, so Lori.
So the vacancy that will be posted.
Will be.
Will be the.
Council will also.
For one, that's to fill a vacancy for, through the next, end of next year. Um, that will be in next week's paper, so it's still not gonna meet.
That's fine.
The second.
We can get it in December.
Yes, yes.
And I believe it's at least two weeks, you can still have the process at the same time.
Okay, perfect. Alright.
I, I would rather study processes, you know, which is which.
Okay, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. As long as we can get a full council by the first meeting in January. Oh, now, second meeting? Alright, so I just wanna make sure we got that done. Um, and then I. The other thing that we'll need to talk about um, is council president, and it's obviously it's council decision, but my suggestion would be to get a full council. But it's up to all of you, the charter just said first of the year, first meeting of the year. So we could, I think we would be fine to wait. Correct? Ashley, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're doing this right. Okay, any questions, comments? Everybody happy with that? Okay, cool.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you, by the way, Ashley, for all, you and Emily for all your. Support. Um, I know I've asked you a million questions, but I just wanna make sure that we are following the processes.
You're doing great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I have no new business. Um, so we are going to move on to, almost there's a mouse, and we're gonna run a city manager report. And it's the work session, and anything else, Bill, I'll approach. And by the way, Bill, thank you for providing this, this was something we talked about. This makes it so much easier for us. Um, and just a quick, quick comment on this. The reason I asked Bill for this is I want council to remember, every time we add a work session, we have to prioritize. So I love having work sessions, I just wanna make sure that we stay focused and get stuff done. That is my goal. So just keep in mind, this is here, get what we have now, and as we add, will. There'll be more work, sorry.
There'll be more work. That's a good way to put it. Yep.
It's not, but work is good.
So first off, congratulations. Congratulations on you all on a great process this evening, so all, all the way around. Okay, so yes, we have a memo here that has a bunch of information about a number of different work sessions, but before we get to that. Um, let me just quickly cover a few things. Number one, December one meeting, the next one, confirmed. As the URA board, Elaine Howard will be here and be giving a presentation, just reaffirming, I think I might have already stated that, but just reaffirming she will be here. And she'll kind of, she'll go over how urban renewal. Um, tax increment finance works, and then she'll kind of go through and talk about Northern Plains's uh, plan and some information to think about. Um, that's just one bit of information. Number two, the shut down's over, of course, we've heard from the EPA, and so we are expecting or hoping to kind of have final, final. Stamp of approval. They're, they are, in their words. Digging out of. The backlog. But we hope to hear before long on that, um, to kind of formally, formally move forward on things. So that's very good progress. And then the last thing before I talk about work sessions. Is. Um, I would, we can talk about this more at a meeting. Mayor selected Dunbrow, but um, we're, we're kind of reaching a point where um, council, we, we need to come to a decision about. How the city wants to handle its communications. And by that, I mean. We have in the budget that was adopted um. A program supervisor position that would do parks, plan, launch, and. You know, kind of getting a, probably a, a very low-cost volunteer-driven parks program. Um, launched and running and doing, internally doing communication for the city, social media, all that stuff. And we're, we're, we're almost five months into the budget, that's five months that we haven't spent money on that. Um, but it is a fully funded position in the budget. So there's that on one hand. The other, on the other hand, is if that's not something that council, um. You know, we, we, you know, if, if we don't put a job description before you, um, for review and approval. Then we're running into the point where we're, we really need to go out and, and hire for at least a year a communications consultant, because we're approaching the end of the year. And we didn't really budget for that, we budgeted for, we, we budgeted for a lesser scoped consultant to help us, but also have that program supervisor position, that's what, that's actually what we budgeted for. But if we don't. Kind of move forward with something on the program supervisor side. Um, our current consultant is, is really kind of been a stepped-in interim. Because of how the previous consultants' long two-year contract ended. And we just kind of need to, end of year approaching, and we need to talk about how to move forward.
We're gonna, sorry.
No, go ahead, no, please, please.
Are there some we discussed, after we discussed the budget, is the, the library's changing?
Not till FY twenty-seven.
That's, uh, that's not till FY twenty-seven, but in the budget, this position was fully funded from, or starting July one. So, yeah, and I think the issue really kind of boiled down to. Council needing to, thank you, council needing to discuss. That law enforcement person maybe being hired, and then there was the idea of a program supervisor position also, and. You know, kind of um, a feeling of conflict, or maybe not both, or you know, all of that conversation. But we're just getting to a point where we really should move forward with something.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so. If it sounds like we need. We'll continue to use Therese for certain things, but we'll, we'll probably need to pull somebody else in, whether it's full-time or. Um, contracted or the majority.
I, I.
That's weird, what I'm hearing.
I, I, I think no matter what we do, we need to go out. At the start of the year, we need to, we need to go out to bid and try to start as soon as, as early as possible in the new year with. A new consulting contract. It, it may be Therese, it may be Therese as a sub-consultant.
That's fair.
Um, but, yeah, we, we just, it's just a conversation we should have in December.
Okay. So counsel, please put some thought into that, because. Bill brought it to me a couple of times and I, even like. What I thought council would wanna hear about, which is basically how can we, like, how much are we gonna gain from the, the contract that we, we might not be fully executing on with Therese for, with consults? And then like, you know, are there other areas that we can pull from, which knowing that we funded it, but also that we had made the decision, we wanted, um. Uh, we wanted to fully fund the police officer as well, and we wanna make sure we're doing long-term solutions for all of them, so. Please put some thought into this and be prepared to talk about it probably in the next meeting or so. Will be my ask of council officials.
Thank you. Any other questions about that before we get into work sessions? Okay, so I have a memo in here, you've all reviewed it. We have a number of different work sessions that. In varying prior, level of priority and however soon you would like to address some and, and do some later. And this is not an exhaustive list. For instance, I didn't get the, a specific work session in here about life, the library and the WCCL, WCCLS levy. Um, but we have eight or nine work session ideas here, there might be some that we have forgotten and come to mind for you, and that's great. Um, but we just kind of needed to move forward scheduling some things out. So we just needed to have a conversation about that. Um, I can elaborate on any, if you would like. Um, or remind if anything had gotten buzzy or hazy. But I think, I think what we'd like to do at, at the very least, and um. You know, correct me if I'm wrong. We, we, I think what we wanna do is, is figure out what the definitely maybe schedule in December, and then after. You're fully seven people, really schedule whatever the rest of them are.
And that would be my suggestion, counsel. Um, is there one of these that jumps out to you as a priority? Keep in mind that we have some. Deadlines and what's our spot in the room. Think about that.
Well, I have one that we can take off. I could do another. More in-depth report for my annual administrative compliance report proposal.
Um, actually, Bill, I think when I talked to you, there was a couple of things that you wanted to bring up on that, that we might give a little more time for. Um, because I think there's some outside entities that we were gonna look at getting reports from. Is that, did I recall that correctly?
Um, yeah, so at least in the, at least in some of the information you put forward, there was audit, and then there was also some insurance things that might be part of this. And so there's, there's a few different parties and topics. And so I think that's why the, your thought was, maybe that's a work session, because there's a few moving parts, but.
Yeah. The goal being that we, we deliberate in work session, or we, not deliberate, sorry, I'm on work. We discuss things in work sessions, come up with a plan, and then we go on in the regular meetings, so that we can start getting out of here by eight-thirty or so.
I just was trying to take that.
No, I appreciate that.
I gave it up like a resident thing, trying.
We were trying. Actually, Bill and I worked this out, but then it kind of came to the point where we were talking it through, and it's like, we need to bring this back to council.
So last meeting, or maybe the four last. we were talking about code enforcements. Um, we have no teeth. We have, we can, you know, shake our fist at things, but we got none of that. But I think before you tackle code enforcement, we might know, first, we wanna enforce. Right, so we need codes for, so maybe the right away uh, issues we have that are kind of negligent, we don't really have a good, maybe get decided, this is what we wanna do about it, and then after that, you could enforce it for it. This would be have something to actually execute on. So I think code enforcement is probably what we wanna do, and maybe before we do code enforcement, figure out what we wanna enforce, really, what we wanna address, so the right away stuff, like.
Yeah, I.
Trucks, campers, uh, people not making their, uh, limes or whatever it is.
Bill, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was the intent of the code enforcement, or was that, did I miss this?
Um, that was part of it, I mean, there, there's, there's, what, there's what the code says allows us to try to enforce, and then there is the enforcement of it, um, with, with how that is actually in the code, so it's, it's.
Are you, are you thinking that might be a longer work session?
You first, having one, before you do the enforcement, right, we might figure, we might identify what we wanna enforce, and then structure that right, to make the rules for it.
That's true.
So.
And then I think, I don't know if we're, I, I think there's more coming, uh, in January with Chief Jones about code enforcement as well.
He will be a huge partner.
Oh, well, yeah, it's gonna enforce it. Instead of name. Yes, yeah, so, okay, so I, that, that's at least two to three work sessions, but I, I think well, sorry, council. Oh, sorry.
Um, so I, this is council Paven, uh, so I would say my, my top two priorities, if, if anyone is asking me, would be strategic plan. I think just the recent change, we're gonna have some fresh faces on council. I think that should be the forefront of what we focus on, to really give us a clear vision and ideas and goals to execute on. And then, um, followed by the U R A, um, just because we know that that's a, a more of a time sensitive issue as well, about sun setting. So strategic plan followed by U R A would be my recommendation.
Counselor. Here, uh, I do agree with counselor Pavens, uh, feedback, um, U R A and strategic plan should be our, um, front and center, and followed by how we get money, so I like full point number one on the report as well.
That's ready.
Um, my first one would be, um, working in planning commission on our codes. That's.
So I think we have at least three to four now for code enforcement, like three or four different work sessions, we need to code enforcement. Um, I'll just say, in my opinion, uh, we get, we need to get strategic plan done, so I guess basically what we're looking at is, I think unless there's some objection, we're probably doing a work session every council meeting going forward. Cause we gotta knock these out, I'm sorry, I know, but we gotta knock these out quick, but but with the intent that this makes sure council meetings. So that is the trade-up, and that's what I'm asking for, is let's get the work done in work sessions, and then we'll do the trade-offs. And if we need to figure out a different time to do work sessions, we'll figure that out. But let's just move through these, um, so council, if you could each individually, please do not copy each other, send your your prioritized list, I'm gonna try and prioritize these with Bill, and I'll work with him on how we keep everything up. If, uh, on track, and then if you change your mind, just let me know. Um, but yeah, it seems like we have a lot of desire to get code enforcement dealt with. Strategic planning and U R A was the top three that I heard, well, the top six now, because we've got so many. Bill, thank you, by the way.
Yeah, no, no problem, um. Yeah, very good.
Anything else from the city manager report?
That is it, thank you.
All right, do I have a volunteer for council reports? To start it, or I'll just pick on some of the final one. Uh, councillor, uh, Agador. Sorry about that.
A plus for that one. Uh, so I, on the, then I had the opportunity to sit on the K D C at the show. Um, three main topics that they were kind of spending a lot of time on was, um, being able to tie on submitting the business survey. Um, they were kind of working through some last minute, um, kind of technical nuances related to new city issued, um, email addresses. Um, as well as they were doing some contingency planning, uh, depending on the response rate, you know, looking through different tactics to probably reach and, um, up like responsibilities. Um, there was a lot of discussion on enhancing our online resources on our same website and, um, adding toolkits for attracting new or, um, adding tools for existing businesses to, um, be successful. And so if anybody has any recommendations of useful content that they would like to see added to the website, um, the E D C would like some feedback, I recommend sending your, your advice or, or recommendations to Lori, and she can write accordingly. Um, and there's a potential for a guest speaker, I don't know if this is true, if this is still happening, um, but the, um, firm that represented, um, healthy, sustainable communities at the banks retail market survey.
That's John.
Yes, John Legarce.
Potential, there was discussion that he may come on, um, at their, early December meeting, but that potential is T V D still, I believe.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and it, that would be not a work session, but a presentation, we're, he's working on a scope of work for the U R A to look at the economics of, not the planning of, but the economics of the district, so.
Great.
My name will be brief tonight, and I do not have any exit issue duties. Um, I will say that, uh, the Center for Addiction Triage Treatment Center is fully operational now in the Beaverton locations. That's really exciting. Um, and then I just, uh, in partnership with councillor Dunbrow was also in attendance at the first of the, um, meetings that was held at Falling Ridge just last weekend, or last week. And I would just share, um, it was really great insight to hear so many different perspectives, and I really look forward to upcoming meetings, and I will be prioritizing the one at Burn Hill next.
Thank you, councillor Page.
So I attended the, uh, planning commission meeting. And, uh, there was some trepidation amongst some of the, um, commissioners about submitted designing um, from the Parks Board. So there was some discussion about what happened, and nothing specific, but just, uh, generalities that was expected of a, of a commissioner. There's also some talk about, uh, budgeting and for, uh, for writing codes. And, uh, I, uh, talked to the public, I should say that the council, for the most part, from what I see, wants to make sure we have codes in place, so we will probably find the budget for those. I also attended the veterans memorial service last Tuesday. It was great. Um, one of the nice things your committee does, I really enjoy these kind of things. Thank you, everybody that participated, Cindy did an amazing job. It's just, just really nice to go out there and see everybody gathered around. And that's gonna happen.
Thank you, councillor.
So I have two things, correct me if I'm in the wrong place, um, council president Dunbrow. Um, I'd like to get a consensus to add the water bill Q R save surveys, the next agenda. Is that, is the?
Yeah, so councillor Redding had brought up the, um, getting a, a survey out on, I believe it was on just community engagement surveys out on, in the water bill regularly. So, um, she just wanted to get a consensus on, and we put that on the next agenda. So that's really cool, that.
Yeah.
Discuss and, and go on.
What would, what would be the, the context of the topics?
Um, I've kind of done a little bit of research on, uh, well, check G T T helped me do some of the research as well, um, like hiring someone to do to create the surveys, how much that would cost, um. I kind of presented how we could, uh, educate at the same time as ask the question. Um. And, and do it all within an existing communication piece that we already have.
I, I think what you're getting at, councillor, I understand is, um, is getting community feedback, as we heard at the, at the, uh, Offal Valley Ridge, and then also, um, continuing to use that, and, and another thought that I would add to that is also putting on the website, but just a lot, getting more community input, um, and capturing, you know, residents, like, you know, their address, so that we can kind of start breaking down by, as much as possible by demographic, and saying, this neighborhood would really like, um, to see more of whatever, I don't know, maybe, maybe something, or a different park, or whatever, number you feed that before is a mission, is that kind of where you're going with this?
It would be questions from staff, council, and our boards, commissions, and committees, and, you know, five to ten questions every month. Maybe we have more, maybe we have less, and, um, offer a ten dollar lottery for entering, and you use your water bill number to enter. It was, it's just a quick snapshot of community engagement.
But the request was put on the agenda.
And I'll do the same report.
Yes, I will, I will mind.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus built, we have a agenda, should be good. Absolutely, thank you.
And then my second report is I met with Parks and Rec. Um, members Lyman and King will represent parks on the U G B PAC that's to come. Um, members Byrne and King will be researching deposit amounts for the rental at Jesse Mays and uh, the processes other neighboring cities use. Counselor Page, I brought up your barbecue idea for the Louis Wentz Park, um, however, there were concerns about fires of neighboring trees. But we did discover barbecue grills are not allowed at Jesse Mays, so it's an idea to put out into a different park that they now have. Um, there was a skate park citizen submission that was discussed, and at this time, we just don't have the money or land for one. But I urged, uh, Parks Board to keep ideas on the horizon for our teen population. And then lastly, we have an opening on the Parks and Rec Board for any interested citizens. A member chose to resign after being publicly questioned about their conduct, and even though I am not aware of any rule or code they violated, um, I just wanna bring this to council's attention, so we can safeguard a healthy, encouraging atmosphere for civic volunteers.
Thank you, councillor. Um, so I've got a whole bunch of stuff, sorry, I'll keep it quick. Um, so just to tie up on the park tours, um, I discussed with Bill, I watched the, the, the recording, just to make sure I understood what happened, um, and I'm gonna try to get a copy with, uh, Park Report Chair, just to get you know, more input in, input. Um, I did speak with the member who resigned and, um, explained to them, they resigned, so they're going from Parks Board, it's not super complicated. Um, however, uh, in reviewing, I didn't find anything that they did that violated any rules. Um, so my encouragement to council would be, if we won't, would be to consider if we want a, um, Bill, Bill, help me, uh, with this, uh, what was, what we talked, um, code of conduct, sorry, that's what it was, code of conduct, or, or general guidance to how, what the, the report the commissions do, maybe we send it to the boards and commissions, or maybe we discuss that, but that's something we should I would like council to think about, and decide how we want to address that going forward, if that's something that needs to be addressed, but it's just something I would like you all to kind of consider. Uh, Bill and I kind of talked through it a little bit, he helped guide me on some options, and I just wanted to let council think about that.
Uh, I don't think each council should make their own, those are regulations that.
Each board?
Yeah, each, each board should make their own, I don't think that's, well, it's been done, I think she'll unify them.
Sorry, and what I was getting at is have them submit to us, and then we kind of take that, or do we wanna take it and push it down? Like, do we take all of them and merge them into one, or do we just push something down, or do we not touch it?
Probably push it down.
Councillor.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where they go. Okay, uh, councillor, thoughts?
I like they give an umbrella, uh, code of conduct.
Standard?
Yeah, and then they have their own bylaws that they kind of.
Agree. Okay, so, um, we'll, uh, i- if it'll be a work, work session. Oh, I learned mine, sorry, it's why you're here, me trying to, and thank you, that's very helpful. Okay, so we'll handle it that way. But I would just remind everybody, um, you know, we all have differences of opinion, just try to be, um, try to work together on things, and you know, if, if you're I would just encourage all the boards and commissions, if there's a problem and you can't solve it without it, you know, somebody resigning, and you, you wanna solve without somebody resigning, you can always come to us, and we'll try to be, um, a neutral third party as much as we can. Um, but that's all we're gonna say about that, and I'll, I'll get, I'm more, we're part of the board chair, just to understand what happened, and we'll make some decisions um, on the code of conduct piece going forward. Um, I attended the Veterans Day event, which was amazing, Cindy always does a great job in it. See, but it was, uh, it was a lot of fun, actually. Ironically bumped into Representative Edwards there, and we had a great conversation, she, um, is definitely open to, you know, trying to find some funding for, you know, things in the future for us. We just need to figure out what they would be and where we would put them, so I didn't really get any further than that, we had some great conversations about upcoming elections, and just North Plains in general, and, uh, the Western Washington County, uh, outside of Metro. Um, I met with Chair Harrington, uh, just trying to get some guidance on, on some things that are happening with the public comment that we discussed, um, and explained to her the city's position that, uh, because the C P Os are a county organization, we do not take a position, but we would appreciate it if everybody would just, you know, be civil and get along, but as a city legally, um, based on feedback from, I believe it was Emily, a couple of weeks ago, um, it's free speech from our side, and I explained to her that we would prefer that, um, the people not be yelling at each other, but we don't have a legal position on it. Uh, based on the city attorney, um, and she also gave me a lot of good counsel on, and history on your, or sorry, U G B, and some things like that, so, um, very helpful. I also met with, um, councillor commissioner, sorry, Willie, um, and got a lot of guidance from him. Just him, his, uh, you know, his thoughts as he leaves the Washington County Commission. Um, and since I forgot to say it during lunch, sorry, Robin, but you got a big shout out from, from, uh, Chair Harrington as being a great library director, and she was very proud, so it's not often that one gets a shout out from the Chair of Washington County Commission, so when I have to, I gotta bring it up and embarrass people. I was pretty proud, it made me feel pretty good to know that Little North Plains has such great library directors. Um, and it was, I swear there was another one, we'll thread right now. Uh, I will be meeting with Washington County Chamber of Commerce to get more information on, uh, interacting with them as the city, so just trying to make the rounds as best I can. Um, and I believe that's most of it, um, I think that's most of it. And with that, is there any questions on the calendars? Anybody have a meeting they cannot make? Or need coverage or one of?
There you go. No, I was, uh, covering next Wednesday's library board, because I like the library boards. The pleasure of visiting there. However, I found out from my wife, today driving from California, I was in, I was in the Bay Area earlier today, so I just made it. I made a drive over here and just jumped in. Our, we put her sent to wrestling last week, and they have an all-hands meeting with the parents on Wednesday, and also have a Christmas pack meeting. So there's two parents and two meetings. And there's library board too. So can somebody spell me for the library board, because I haven't, I haven't had a chance to talk to, uh, the Christmas yet, so I can try to get covers there, but
Anybody?
This is up here now, and everybody's here, and it's basically for Wednesday.
Anybody have a Wednesday?
What time is it, six P M?
Yes.
And Rob, Bill's on the study meeting.
I can be.
Nation streets.
And she has treats.
Right, Robin, donuts, maybe, no?
Counselor Redding's gonna take that.
Councillor, thank you, councillor, I appreciate that. All right, and then I have E B C on the third, um, I guess that's coming in the next month, I think. But yeah, on the third, and then councillor Agador, Parks on the, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, um, and then, oh, Washington, sorry, last one, sorry, one alibi, Washington County Coordinating Committee, um, mostly focused on transportation, a ton of stuff for us, um, there's a pilot program around basically a county fund or a, owed up funded, um, ride-share program, which is gonna look a lot like Uber, uh, but it's gonna be pretty limited, um, and I don't think it's really gonna impact us, um, especially with the chain, with the things you're going on to owe already, so I'll bring more of that as it comes up, um, there's a lot more stuff that involves the metro area, um, transportation, um, but mostly it was all transportation all day today, so it was a lot. Um, and then, let's see. Okay, I think we're good, yes, did I miss anything? Meetings? Anything else before we can close the meeting? I can't believe it. All right, so, uh, we are adjourned at nine nineteen.